Good evening. The time is now 6:00 PM. This is the Water Pollution Control Authority public hearing for June 4th. And at this time, I'd like to take a roll call.
All right, Gagne.
Kevin Cunningham.
Gagne Moore.
All right. We would open the floor at this time for public comment if anybody has a question or concern. This would be the time to bring forth information to the WPCA.
Sean Peterson. I got a question. You've got an equipment replacement. What is that? It's gone up quite a bit over the last two years.
Equipment replacement is a line item we use to replace existing equipment. Instead of just repairing, we get a new piece of equipment. It's either a new pump, new motor, mainly capital improvement projects. So new boiler, new roof, any items like that.
So that's something that's spelled out? You can put money there so you can do whatever you want with it?
Yeah, we have to go up to bid for stuff. Still go up to bid for items, yeah. But next year's items, we plan on doing a roof and...
Yes, I have a roof plan for next year. I have HVAC system planned for ventilation for next year.
Which you could use this year, but...
Just those two projects are going to consume almost that entire line item. But if you look at my five-year capital improvement plan, it lists about 10 other capital improvement projects that at least need to get done that year and more for the following years as well.
So when you buy pickup trucks and vehicles, how do they get... They're not listed on there anywhere?
No.
Is that equipment?
Vehicles would be separate, a line item, and we're not getting any new vehicles for next year.
But you bought some last year, right?
Yeah, that's in here. It does say vehicle.
Yeah, so this fiscal year, we did buy two new trucks.
Eighty, though.
Sorry, approximately.
Vehicles is on the top of page or the back page?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was $7,000. Yep, we bought them for that.
Do you have solar panels on that site?
Yes, you do.
They're not doing it yet?
We have solar panels right now that are in array on the ground. And we have a project which is going to require us to try to move them. We have to get permission to do so first. So we're working on that.
As I see your electric pieces, they're on a better color wise?
Because we got a letter saying not the supplier, it's delivery, but it is going on. Delivery's going to be going on.
I have a letter stating that there's a good chance ever source is going to increase the rates and be adjusted accordingly in anticipation of a rate increase.
As of July 1st.
It just seemed like all the other town buildings went down and now it's going to go up.
Well, this one has the most equipment, like because you have the pumps and everything going, so it's... They use a lot more electricity than I do here.
But we're upgrading, right? Putting VFTs and energy efficient pumps.
We're trying, yeah.
We're trying slowly.
But still, some of that equipment is still so old.
I thought that was one of the plans a couple of years ago you were talking about. The fire tanks.
Yeah, but we haven't yet... We're still rolling the old ones right now because we haven't yet gotten the new ones because it's a whole project.
It's a process. You go through your RFP, you have to have it inspected, you have to have then bids for it to get done. So it's taken a while.
How far along is it?
Oh, it's right now.
Engineering still.
Yeah, secondary clarifier is still in engineering.
So we're looking at two more years probably?
Yeah.
Probably.
One, two more years.
But it is moving forward.
And those are actually going to be bigger tanks to handle and actually bigger drives. So they'll be more efficient for their newer drives. They'll actually more likely consume more energy because they'll be twice the size as our existing drives.
How many employees do you currently have?
In total, in the whole pool department, there's nine, including the employees at the town hall.
Does your overtime and your salaries themselves play a role?
Yes.
Is that what you had last year or does that just... The way I see it?
Well, last year's salary was $711 and this year's $782. That's all based on...
Union contract rates. And also one of the... We do contract plowing for the police department and the fire stations. And we sometimes have... It comes out of the...
It comes out of their budget because it's in their union contract.
Oh.
So I have to plan on if no one in my department is interested in the overtime hiring the private company that plows the fire stations. And then there's an extra overtime against stipends to be on call. And that stipend hasn't been split with... We just installed emissions...
What's your current stipend?
I think it's $200 a week we on call approximately. I think it's going up to $250 a week. Or it's $250, go up to $300.
Pretty good deal.
I don't have the number of...
Oh, got to make sure they show up.
Yeah.
That's our stipend.
Then we're getting emissions monitoring system as well. So we'll know when an emergency happens before it's a full-blown emergency.
And that's part of your equipment?
No, it's part of the overtime. So the on-call staff now knows the emergency and can come in and take a look at the issue. So I anticipate more overtime calls into that.
Depending upon the code. If the code is something they can realize early, they don't have to come in. But if the code's bad, they do have to come in to make sure it's okay.
Oh, we don't have 24 hours service there?
That's why... No, we haven't. That's why we're doing the missions. There were days years ago you'd come into a real mess.
I thought the past was 24 hours.
Nope.
Oh.
Nope.
So now we have at least one person on call now who has to come in in 24 hours.
Is that though?
Yeah, if there's an emergency, now it's on-call system will let them know there's an emergency and we'll call them in.
So if you hear anything during our meetings talking about mission control, those are the things we're talking about, making sure they're monitored properly. GIS mapping is something that we've been working on to try to get a map of every street that we have our sewer line on. And that way it maps out better. So if there's a call, you know exactly where to go to. We're trying now.
Does that inform anything with planning and zoning?
Yeah, that's the same GIS mapping, yeah. We just share the services. Any other questions?
I have... Jim Gagne. What kind of advertising do you do? I'm just curious.
Mainly for job openings and for going out to bid for equipment. So we just put our boiler out to bid. We had it posted on the town website and in the newspaper.
Yeah, the newspaper costs a lot. I was just curious.
And depending upon plowing, if we have the need for someone to come in for plowing, we subcontract on it. So that's another end.
Did a boiler be done last year too? Is there a merger board on last year also?
Yes, there was. So one boiler...
What boiler did you have?
So at the North Plant, there's one boiler in the lab ad-in building. And there's four boilers in my sludge handling building. And we're currently working on the sludge handling building for the licenses right now.
And you don't want to bid one every year typically?
So we're doing it in two phases. We're in phase one now. We just went out for design and bid to get everything demoed and get the heating back online for this winter. And then this coming fiscal year, we're going to do the HVAC side. One of the 50% of the boilers just handled the HVAC and heating with the air that we're ventilating, which has been down for at least 20-plus years that we have that other money.
So we don't need it?
Okay. We've been keeping an eye on using our ARPA money for this idea. Most of our ARPA money is used for like $3.4 million worth of upgrades. So it's taken a while to make sure it's inspected properly and done properly. I mean, there was an issue, I got a call this week about how hot it was over in the building. And I said, "Well, I have some ACs here you could have" because we've now gone to these units. Unfortunately, your windows do the 45-degree angle open and they don't do anything else. So...
None of our buildings have ever had AC.
Yep.
So whether the temperature is outside, it's inside.
Yep. So that's why the HVAC for next year, we're trying to get it.
Including all our lab chemicals, our lab equipment, our electrical equipment. If it's 90 outside...
It's going to be about 120 inside.
It's 90 inside.
Doesn't ARPA money have to be used by September?
No, we have to earmark it.
Okay, as long as you gear mark it by September?
Yeah, and that's what we've done, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. As long as we keep track of the expenditures as we go and then we earmark it already, we do.
So now, last year, you went out, we had a public meeting to do the clarifiers and all that and increase our mill rate, right? Is that number in here or not?
Are you talking about the $4 million for the...
Correct. All that.
It should be...
It's not in here.
Not in here.
Are we looking at an order increase when that gets done?
We're hoping not. Our plan is... Do you see with the equipment replacement? You know, like she's going to get some of these projects done now. We're hoping by the time there, as you see prior years, it's $40,000, $40,000. So by the time we get some of the projects done, we're hoping that'll drop down to absorb some of it. So we're going to have to pull some of it. I'm trying to be positive.
I know, but this is how it works. It won't. There'll be something else we need or want.
No, not necessarily.
We prioritize.
I got a question. Why does water pollution plow the firehouses and stuff like that?
It was just past practice.
Just wondering.
It was just past practice. We had to plow our 1 WPCA facilities, which includes multiple pump stations and two plants. We already have staff and plow trucks available to do our stuff. So in the past, we...
It just seems a very place to put that.
Yeah, we did in the past, we had volunteered to help out and plowed stations and town hall. So then it ended up being broken.
So do you do the town hall now?
Yes.
So you do all plowing personally?
For the buildings.
For the public.
Here it's also shared. It's not just sewer, the highway comes out as well, plus our staff here do certain areas of the town hall.
Way back when it started with WPCA, our highway department could not be taking all of that plus the roads. So then WPCA had their trucks at the time and the contracts. So that's why we get...
Okay, that makes...
Plowing, that's why it goes into her budget. Because it's in her union contract.
And part of it is a trial because we wanted to be able to see if it would continue to work. Our problems have lately, just to be honest, our problems have been that not everybody wants to do it. So now you only have one person doing it out of where you should have three. So we're going to be looking to maybe make a modification in contracts to see if we can get away from them.
Get away from the plowing or just get away from the contract?
The contractor is if possible. And then eventually, there's just no one that wants to do it.
Oh, yeah. I get that 100%, but I just thought it was an odd place to find out that it's in her budget.
Yeah, it's in her budget, yeah. It's always in the league. Because way back when, like, silly didn't have trucks. Like, now they have two new trucks where they probably do this area, contract, you know, that type of stuff. But it's hard to do that if it's in her union contract because some of them reject that.
And if it's in her union contract, she don't have any union members that want to do it.
That's why we're talking about that in a separate discussion to make it a motion to leave, go away from.
So if I said my budget and the town can't budget for it, because I assume we were doing the work, that's why I would pay for the private contractor if the WPC staff couldn't handle it. And obviously, the police and the fire stations, some of the safety issue, if I don't have enough staff to get it out of there, then it's not gonna matter.
There's other areas we do as well. We can do the library, that's another one.
Does it get really confusing if it's doing what?
No, we've already... It's in the contract.
It's in the contract.
Until in your contract, in that contract, there's specific places this one does and he has specific places that the town does?
Yes, and in the contract, it lists exactly what sites you have to do.
Okay.
And then I have three or four plow trucks. So every snowstorm, they do, who's getting which area, and they have some might do town hall and the walk-in track and the rec and a fire station, and someone else might handle Musa and someone else will be in the center.
And you're in charge of making sure that gets done?
Yes, or the person who designated to be on-call staff to call them in. But as of now, it hasn't been an issue with Perry Graham, who's doing what.
I just wanted to know when the luck stops.
Yes, sir.
What are the hours of operation for that department?
Very early.
So the planned staff usually from 6:00 to 2:00. With one staff member coming in 3:00 AM to 11:00. And then I have one staff here at the town hall that is working during the town hall
Okay, that's...
Yes.
Your secondary, but it wasn't there. So you have seven people that take care of the waste treatment portion, correct?
Yes.
Roughly?
Yes, or roughly, yeah.
How many hours a day do they work total?
Four, yeah, or eight hours a day, the four, yeah.
Is it eight hours because all that building's open for it? All those buildings are open for it?
Approximately, yes. But I guess I have the one staff that's coming in from, coming in at 3:00. So I do have one staff who opens up the facility earlier.
Right. So you have a lot of people on... How many different sites are there? Three or four?
I have two wastewater tube implants and 12 pump stations.
Seems a lot of staff.
Not really.
For that hours. I didn't think it was bad when I thought it was, you know, two or three shifts. I was like, "Oh, that's not too bad."
It's not enough staff, honestly, because they also are not just checking the stations, but there's other work to be done during the day as well. Mechanical work being done, fixing things, or going out to different sites. Then you'll get a call, call before you dig. Things like that, they're happening on a regular basis. Right now, it's manageable, but you also didn't mention what are they doing on the weekends?
Well, I didn't know. It sounded like they weren't working.
No. We have two staff that come in and check on things during the weekend as well.
For an eight-hour shift or just for a couple hours?
Right now, it's a two-man shift for three hours every weekend and holidays. And they check all locations and facilities.
I think we'll all feel safer once mission control gets installed. So that way, it makes it much safer. You'll know what's going on.
That should reduce manpower.
Not so much manpower. I mean, you're going to get a call like the mission control. If they're monitoring during the daytime, they'll see what's happening right away. But then on the off-shift, they'll get the mission control to set an alarm and then you can have someone go back in, schedule to go back in, assess the issue, and possibly call more people back in if needed. These are older systems, they break down a lot. Fortunately, we've been going through that rotation, you know, we've gone through a rotation of upgrading all of the generators, which is one of the things we'll talk about later tonight. But we're trying to maintain that so you don't have 47-year-old generator running. We've been doing okay with it so far. So we've got one or two...
Who takes care of the generators?
We have mechanic...
Is that subbed out or do we have a mechanic on staff?
Mechanic on site.
Do you have a diesel mechanic on your staff?
We have multiple mechanics on our staff to maintain all our pumps, motors. Pretty much we have electromechanical equipment in every single building we have. So we maintain all of that.
While we're at it, how's the pump station, the dock truck one, how's that going?
We have not broke ground yet, but we're kind of waiting on a pre-packed pump station to be made and ready to get delivered before they really start breaking ground.
So engineering is, all that's done?
All that's done.
All for medicine?
Yep. And then all the generators that's already done, they're awarded, we're waiting for the generator, emissions communication system. That's kind of the final stage of that project. We only have a few more stations to complete before it's up and running online. So the clarifier project is the one that is really to be solved, yeah.
I mean, the other part of the clarifier is the fact we need more space. To get the space, we need to move some of those arrays out of the way once we give permission.
That's an off-question. The planning and zoning amended the zoning regulations to allow for multifamily housing. Is this going to be a concern of yours? A hundred, 200 here, is that going to be a concern?
Yeah, it could be, depending on where they go and the size of the pump station they're going to and which plant they're going to. The North Plant can only handle a million gallons a day. This Village Plant can only handle about 700,000 gallons a day. And that's the smaller tree plant. And as of now, I'm finding most business is coming on the Plainfield side and going to the smaller, more strategic plant.
So if somebody comes before planning and zoning for multifamily, you probably want to be notified and say you know the location.
Yeah, because you're a big...
There's already concern as we speak of taking on an Amazon and also Uline.
I was just going to ask, is A U line, my name, you had to tell them, "No, we cannot send your flow to the post station. We just can't handle it unless we upgrade the entire station." And that's how they are having the planning going back towards Dow Road instead.
So far, they've been very cooperative. All those businesses have been saying the right things to us. We have to keep on monitoring to see if it's going to end up coming up, so to speak.
So Amazon and Uline and all those houses up on Dow will be feeding the same pump station? That station will handle all that?
So the Amazon is our house over. That's a big one. That goes to a different pump station.
That is going right by the motel, right?
Yes. The one from, going from Dow, that does not go to that pump station.
Or does that go off the Stanmark?
That, I think, crosses Route 12, I think, with under a building or two, and then cuts to our main pump station, our Heckler's pump station, which actually takes the entire flow from Plainfield and Pump City to at least our tree plant. So that's one pump station.
Is there any places we're maxed out on? Are coming, darn close?
I'm not maxed out on the D O... We have one at the D O T facility at Plainfield Pike that is a very small pump station, very small wet well. We told Uline, "No, you can't go here unless you upgrade the stations because it's such a small station in that area." But it's the only one that's going to be undersized, that can't handle much actual flow. All the other ones, I think, can't handle.
There's room for expansion?
Yeah.
Yeah, on that side of the 14A, there is appropriate horse side that could be zoned for multifamily. So we do have to watch that. Okay.
Should upgrade that pump station.
We do have a price for an engineer to upgrade it. If I want to use my whole budget for an entire year, I can get that up if I want to use my...
Let it answer.
Then how many more must have come?
Yeah, that's why, that's why they're going down a different...
Wow.
Uline's going down a different road, so they... We figured a way for them to connect.
That's an off-question. How much does a place like that generate for sewer?
Uline?
Yeah. It's just bathroom, it's actually, right?
Yeah, it's not going to generate much income. We'll get there.
No, no, I... No.
The flow.
So, how much sewage?
They haven't given me a number yet. We had originally done, I had an engineering firm do some estimations. And I could send you, I don't have the number off the top of my head. I could send you what the estimations they said were for a 1.2 million square warehouse. They estimated the number of employees and the number of bathrooms they would have and the amount of flow.
Okay.
And based on that...
That's what you base it on, yeah.
And then based on that number, I, we figured out they couldn't go to that pump station. But with just bathroom, I'd say the number being lower than the estimate without some issues.
So once Uline comes online, what's the capacity of where they go? Is there any room for we go there?
Yeah, so they're going to the pump station, I believe, that has the biggest pump station that sends all the flow to one plant. So the one plant's on a hill, so all the flow has to be pumped to the wastewater tube plant. And it's going to that, straight to that one pump station. And that one pump station, we can't handle that actual load.
That's why the expansion of the clarifiers does help because you know that there's more coming.
Yeah, that helps for anyone who wants to go in Central Building or where you are in Musa, but it doesn't help.
Thank you. Other questions?
No, I think I can.
So you have in front of you what is the proposed budget, and we have spoken about a few things on there. Are there other questions?
She did quite nicely in answering our questions.
So let me make sure we do this correctly. If we do make a motion to set the rate, we also are setting the budget.
Yeah, it says to be at 432. 432, is that the very top?
Yep.
In the small print?
Yeah.
We all need classes. Took me a long time to find that.
It says, "Discuss an act on setting the sewer rate for fiscal year." But then we also go over to our special meeting. Item number two says, "Discuss and set the sewer rate for fiscal year again." Is that not to be done in section, done here, but not there?
This you discuss and then you set it at the, so public hearing, you discuss it?
Yep.
And then just at the meeting, that's it?
So it was just public comment for the second?
Yeah.
Okay. So we don't have to take any action as of that item? Are there any other questions or concerns? And I know you took your time by putting this budget together, so thank you.
Very good job.
Entertained a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're now adjourned at 6:25. We can go right into immediately following the WPCA public hearing at the Plainfield Town Hall. There is a special WPCA meeting scheduled for tonight and June 4th. Call the order roll call.
All right, Gagne.
Kevin Cunningham.
Gagne Moore.
All right. Item C, to approve the special meeting, a WPCA meeting from the May 13th date.
Make motion to approve the meeting minutes for the special WPCA meeting for May 13th, 2024.
And I'll second him.
Any other discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Public comment? Want to do with that? All right, there's two items in all business. Should be new business, there shouldn't it? So that was put in the wrong place. Discuss an act on proposed cemetery road generator replacement. You have in your packet information, I did receive most of it today. Talking with Jason, he supplied us with all that information. For the cemetery road pump station, I think we spoke about it a little bit last time, but you should have in this paper clipped area a, everything that came in from today. So it's kind of laid out the as of right now, as of receiving quote from Kinsley. However, if you've seen your packet on the last page, there is Kinsley in there. Each of our little different information to digest, but... There's a page for Kinsley that talks about the grain tow. Yeah, Kinsley's offer was to sell at $70,730. Then you have a few items in there. First of all, there's a packet of staple that talks about the actual generator that they're offering, which is a Generac. It's a 30 kilowatt. And then the AC/DC, which was talking about two options that they had offered. One was for something brand new. And that was the first of those two. That's the one in staple, I believe. There we go. So we did speak about this last time. The AC/DC Industrial Electric LLC offered one brand new, which was $48,593. And then the one we just speak of, that was one hour of use, as a used, which was proposed at $35,644.65.
Do we have any certification that this was only used for one hour?
I have to ask AC/DC.
I'm just wondering because I can tell you, I ran my car, you know, picked up whatever. I only ran it for one hour. I ran it for two years. So I'm wondering what kind of assurances we have that...
We've worked with AC/DC in the past and we kind of live in a regular company. Sometimes new generators do have like an hour and like a gauge on them that you can look at. It could be dollars, it could be newer ones sometimes with a digital gauge. But we might be able to verify that.
I would ask that you verify. I mean, not that they don't have the reputation and, you know, nothing like that. We've used them in the past. Obviously, they're reputable. We wouldn't use them again if they weren't. I just want to make sure that what they're saying is correct. I mean, if it's got three hours, then I'm not complaining. But I just want to...
Okay, I understand your logic, one hour.
I mean, like I said, I'm not going to complain if it's a couple more hours. I just want to make sure, just like you. I just want to be with them. Thank you.
So each, whether it's the new or the used, both come with, it says here, first, your service is included in pricing?
And you said before we get the warranty comes with it, correct?
Whatever's in, I don't have that with me.
He did say that last meeting.
That's what you said in the last...
Last meeting.
In the last meeting, you said that whatever came with the original warranty because it had one hour, it would...
Transfer.
Transfer. That was my question to you last time.
I would say the package should say, I don't have it on the table. Maybe it should say the warranty.
AC/DC will provide a full one-year, 150 running hours warranty from data start of start. So full year, 150 running hours warranty.
So what do the usual warranty on a brand new, something like this go? What's the warranty, what type of warranty do you know?
I'd say usually at least one in one year.
One year? So it's like you... One year, so it's like you've got refrigerator, it's one year.
Yeah, sometimes you get a little longer warranty, you just pay extra for a longer warranty. So that's also, if you ask for a larger warranty, you have to pay a little bit more and get the, the bigger warranty.
The forty-eight thousand dollar one, the new one?
Mm-hmm.
Has that in here for sixteen hundred and seventy-eight dollars?
Yeah, I saw that.
Ten years extended.
I was worried, we're talking about like this one here.
Yeah. I thought you meant the other one.
No, 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 I knew, I knew for the, for the new one, that was in our package from the quarter. I was just wondering about the one year, one, one, one hour. One hour was what I was concerned with.
How long do these generators typically last?
Our last one's lasted from nineteen seventies, nineteen eighties to, you know, two guys, twenties. I don't think newer ones are lasting quite as long, since there's more electronics in the state, that one is involved now. But I'd say we should see at least twenty plus year, like a lifetime, really depend on how many hours they'll, they'll make to it, and then maybe we need some of the parts for it, you know, forty years later.
Biggest reason I ask is, is fifteen years old, correct? So in ten years, are we going to have troubles finding parts, when we need it to last thirty more years, you know?
That's why, yeah, that's why I think it's, both of them, there's on the table, a used one that's older, and one one hour cheaper, and a brand new one for price.
The brand new one for the same, around the same price, though, it's only thirty kilowatts, right? And the other one's sixty.
And that's a smaller, yeah, so tax size.
Right.
So the brand new ones half the size of the one with the one hour?
Yes.
But the one hour is older, so getting parts would be hard.
It would be, yes, currently I can get parts for, honestly.
Right now?
I mean, twenty years, you're right, I can guarantee you, that they'll still be making the parts.
Similar to what we have right now with a forty-seven year old generator, those are easy to find parts.
Yeah, our current one still works, I can find some parts for it, other parts, they don't make, and there's nothing.
No one can fabricate?
Nothing that can be fabricated.
With your expertise, which one, which one would you say we should go with, even though the forty-eight thousand is half, half of the?
You have that paper that we just gave you, the last one? That was a recommendation from Jason, he's the mechanic.
Yeah, that's the lead one, the mechanic.
Okay, so that's your lead mechanic, okay. I tend to agree with Jason. So the one with half the stuff would, would still work?
The one with.
The one with half the?
The one with the.
Half capacity. Half capacity, that's what I'm looking for, thank you.
Yes, that's the, that's the size we have there now, currently.
Right, so why were we looking to go twice the capacity? Because this one fell in our lap?
Yes, the one fell, fell, fell in the lap, we just had a good price, and then I guess they ever extended that area, then we have the extra capacity and the generator.
If we went with a lower capacity, how, future, is it, would it max us out, or would we have some room if we go on expanding?
I don't have the, the mechanic expertise to be able to answer that question, but I'd ask somebody in the mechanic, they have to.
That's a good question, I mean, I mean, we're going to max out capacity on it right now.
Give me the thirty, the new one?
The new one.
Yeah. Yes, I tend to agree with the request from Jason, talking about.
I'm just worried about the capacity.
Well, this one's going to be sixty. That's what covers it.
He said direct, says parts should be sold for many years.
So you are going to make a motion, just to make it easier, that initial page, it has the, all of the different costs, probably the one to make it.
I'll make a motion that we purchased a generator, the used generator from A C D C, sixty kilowatt, for thirty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-four thousand, sixty-five cents.
Okay. I'll second. Any other discussion?
I don't understand, I'm just worried about many parts.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And you're standing, okay?
Yes.
Yep. And item two, discuss and set the sewer use rate for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Again, thank you for the update on the budget. Making sure we do this properly, the budget is going to be set, if we do set the number at the two million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, which makes the use rate of third, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. So if we could put those in the form of motion, that would help.
I'll make a motion to set the water pollution control budget at two million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and set the user rate at four hundred and thirty-two dollars per use.
Okay, and second, I'll second that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We don't have new business, don't we? We put it in the wrong spot. Okay, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Aye, sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, and six thirty-seven. All those papers out. So the time now is six thirty-seven, this is a town of Plainfield special board select meeting for June fourth, called the order pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to every body of which stands, from the nation under God, in this world, with the reading and consensus of honor.
Thank you, and roll call?
All right, Kevin.
Kevin Cunningham.
Gagnon, Maury.
Thank you. But we have minutes from the board select meeting from five thirteen, and also from February twelfth. You take it one at a time, together, which I like.
I'll make a motion that we accept, accept the meeting minutes for five thirteen and February twelfth.
The correction wasn't made on the minutes.
On February twelfth, what do you got?
Sorry, I'll let you know what the correction is on. Item three, it just says that, all right, made a motion.
Oh, and then we need to be a second, yep.
It needs to have, I think he seconded it, and the motion carried.
So we have an amendment to the second one for that correction?
Yes. I'll make an amendment to the second.
Uh, February twelfth.
February twelfth.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, finally, all business, discuss and approve resolution adoption of the twenty twenty-four Northeast Council of Governments Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. So at the last meeting, I asked, is this thing able to go forward? They said yes, finally, yes. So what you have is a draft of the, it's a municipal resolution, and I do have it in a regular format, but this is where N E C O was talking about the FEMA mandated document that must be updated every five years, and the twenty twenty-four plan did not have to be updated until twenty twenty-nine, once we approve it. So they hope we can identify this as a future issue for the town of Plainfield if need be, and I can read through the, the resolution. Whereas Board Selectment of the Town of Plainfield recognizes the threat that natural hazards pose to people and property within the Town of Plainfield, and whereas the Town of Plainfield in collaboration with the Northeast Council of Governments has prepared a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, hereby known as the twenty twenty-four Northeast Council of Governments Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, in accordance with federal laws, including Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act, has amended the National Flood Insurance Act of nineteen sixty-eight, has amended, and the National Dam Safety Program Act, has amended, and whereas the twenty twenty-four Northeast Council of Governments Hazard Mitigation Plan identifies mitigation goals and actions to reduce or eliminate long-term risks to people and property in the Town of Plainfield from the impacts of future hazard and disasters, and whereas the adoption of the Board Selectment of the Town of Plainfield demonstrates its commitment to hazard mitigation and achieving the goals outlined in the twenty twenty-four Northeast Council of Governments Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, now therefore be resolved with the Town of Plainfield Connecticut that. The Board Selectment of the Town of Plainfield adopts a twenty twenty-four Northeast Connecticut Council of Government Hazard, Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. While content related to the Town of Plainfield may require revisions to meet with the plan approval requirements, changes occurring after adoption will not require the Board Selectment of the Town of Plainfield to re-adopt any further iterations of the plan. Subsequent plans update following, following the approval of the period for this plan will require separate adoption of resolutions, and it would be adopted by a vote of whatever we, we voted on tonight on this date, and we were able to bring that back to the Northeast Council of Governments for their records. So what is your pleasure on this?
Make a motion to approve the resolution adopting twenty twenty-four Northeastern Connecticut Council of Governments Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
And I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So there was a issue with the animal control for H vac?
No.
No?
Tax.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped right over there.
New business.
New business, consider an act on the tax refunds as requested by the tax collector totaling three hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-seven cents. First one is for Nissan Affinity L L C, L T, L L C for two eighty-five, twenty-four. Sandra El Tandro for twelve dollars and ninety-five cents. Thomas G. Fornier for twenty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Make a motion to approve the refunds to the tax collector, amount three hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-seven cents.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so then we go to item two, finally. The, we need to put some H vac at the animal control office as it has not been working properly, if anything, for years.
Really up there currently, that isn't working?
We have a little, a window unit, and that's about it, and for the animals, not much, it keeps not ringing down. So we thought this the best thing to do was go out to bid for a H vac, they have monies in their, in their budget, so we don't worry about that.
That's a good question.
Yep, they have monies in their budget, so we looked at this as two units versus one. One is not enough energy to keep, cool the candles as well as heat buildings up for the staff. So it was talked about, you see in here, there are two different bids, and the bids talk about the twelve hundred B T U hybrid outdoor units, and there, another one's a wall unit, and there is two bids in front of you.
So outdoor means it's outside?
Yeah, it's definitely outside. So like, if you take a look in the front of the patio here, that's an outdoor unit, you take a look in front of the planning and zoning office outside, that's the outdoor units.
I'll make a motion to accept a bid for portable air in the amount seventeen thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Item three, discuss an act on appointment of an open seat on Z B A. Letter was sent to us with excellent handwriting.
She does.
Yep, so we have an opening.
I'll tell you since.
We have an opening on zoning board of appeals, we had a person who stepped off, I think, got a board of bed, and the same person up, zoning board of appeals. So we have a letter here from Audrey LeMieux for her request to ask us to entertain this for putting her on Z B A.
I'll make a motion, we appoint Audrey LeMieux to the Z B A.
Just a quick question, is it alternate for this?
It's alternate.
Alternate, yeah.
Okay.
It replaces equal.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So this is the second reading, this time with all five pages.
Yep.
Second reading of the proposed vehicle use policy.
The only thing I have in our packet, we're not more.
Adoptions?
Yeah, I'm thinking, make sure we get that change from the Town of Waterford.
Yeah.
To the Town of Plainfield, okay?
Yep.
Waterford, New York.
This, where is your?
I'm in Long Beach.
Oh, because we have the new updated stuff.
Oh.
Yeah, right here. Plainfield?
That was, that was from fourteen A.
Yep.
Wasn't our package, so?
The Waterfield one's in here too.
Yeah, I think I said, just, okay.
That was a prototype, I see, but the Plainfield one's same thing.
Yep.
Yeah, yep, there is one, okay. So we're making sure we use Plainfield?
Yes.
Yep. So at this time, we entertain motion, what was your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to adopt the vehicle use policy, as ready.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we have finally completed the audit. We are looking to set a date, I think we talked about this with the board of finance already, just to make sure that we do the setting, because that's how it's required. I would say that we need to set a date for the annual town meeting, just for acceptance for the June eighteenth, which is Tuesday night.
I'll make a motion to schedule a town meeting for June eighteenth to present the audit.
Time and place?
Town, Plainfield Town Hall, and they have their meeting at six thirty, I believe.
Six thirty, so. And I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, you have item number six, which is your first reading of the petty cash policy. Just trying to make sure that the cash flow goes properly with whatever department has use of cash flow, they have, for different events, they may have a petty cash box, and that's what we're trying to get to. So if you want to just read through, have any questions?
Read through, um, so my question on the, the change fund, it says the change fund would be exchanged for denomination only. So in other words, do we have a number that would be in that box? Because, so if the change fund, and you're getting fives and ones out of there, is there two hundred, three hundred, six hundred, what is in that box?
That's something we can actually put in there.
Should be something in there. And on the petty cash fund, there should be a dollar about there as well. Does it start out with six hundred at the beginning, or whatever, at the beginning of the, you know, of the budget here?
Event, yep.
So whatever begins with, it needs to be put in there, so that everybody's aware what amount of money is supposed to be in there. I mean, obviously, the petty cash wouldn't stay that way, but that would need to be replenished at the beginning of every fiscal year, obviously.
And I think what they do is on a regular basis, they go through with the clarifying what's, unweekly, I think it is weekly.
Right, I would just like to have that.
Yep.
To know what's supposed to be in the.
Starting amount.
Starting amount.
Yep.
At the end.
And what the denominations are for the change funds.
I mean, it, that's not as important of what the denominations are as the amount on each one, the petty cash as well as the change funds.
Well, as long as they, I think it might be, my opinion, I think it might be best if we put the denominations, because if we put six hundred, one hundred dollar bills in there, it's not going to help anybody.
Well, it's not. So the person, whether it be Kelly or whatever, would make sure that, so there's six $100 bills in there, they would be in charge of making sure there was 105s, 110s, 101s, so to speak. Alright, so that would be the responsibility of whoever's responsibility it is to keep track of this.
Okay.
But there does need to be, at the beginning of every fiscal year, the petty cash would need to be obviously replenished. And the change fund should never change if properly done.
I think what they would be doing is replenishing weekly, to make sure that they're up to that number for the next event.
You wouldn't replenish the change fund, because that would always have a certain amount, and you would change out the denominations.
Right, right, that's what I meant.
Okay, yes.
Yep.
Just making, making sure we're all on the same page here. This is what I do.
Usually, if it's a, like a recreation event, someone comes up with a 50 or 100, then by the end of the time.
Right, and that's why I would suggest to make sure that these amounts are enough. I wouldn't like, for the change fund, if they're going to make change, I, you know, I don't, I would make it a minimum of five, maybe six, because you're going to need ones, fives, and tens for whatever event you're having.
Yep.
The petty cash fund, I don't know what you use petty cash for currently, so that being said, I don't, I don't have an opinion on what that number would have to be. I would just make sure that whatever it has been, do we have petty cash in the past?
Yes.
Okay, so whatever that has been annually?
Each, each department's a little different. You have petty cash here at the town hall, that's held by Dodi. You might have some at the police station, using for whatever they need for.
Okay.
And then you might have something for recreation department, because they have different events that happen.
So this is for multiple departments?
Absolutely.
Again, whatever that amount should be for each department that would have a petty, and should be clearly stated what those departments are. Where does this petty cash at? Like we just said, the police station, town hall, and wherever those petty cash funds are, if there's five different places, then five different places.
Yep.
And that's it. That's all there is for.
Okay.
Okay?
Reasonable, yep, okay.
And I, and this is a perfect form.
We could always follow it up with Kelly between now and the next meeting.
I will.
Okay.
I will definitely.
Alright, item, unless there's something else? Yep, petty cash? Oh, item number seven, discuss an act on Dow Road tree clearing work. We've been working in concert with the state of Connecticut for doing upgrades to Dow This was proposed, you see the first page is really 16,500, the second page is Dow Road was offered up at 12,600. This is a housekeeping issue, because the work was already completed. It should have gone out to bid through the state, they didn't do that, they actually contracted with somebody to come in, and they did it. So we're basically just following up to say we acknowledge it. You can take action or not, whatever you'd like to do.
So my question here is, this was done, if I'm correct, for EverSource to relocate its utility poles?
Correct.
How's that our problem?
It's part of our, now, if you remember, a few years ago, we had allocated monies of $300,000 for the private funding general fund to help out to offset the cost.
Okay.
So it is part of our problem.
Okay, so that, we don't do that as a rule when, when EverSource wants to move a pole?
Nope. Nope, they wanted to, we wanted to work in concert with them, and fortunately, they took it upon themselves to.
I don't have a problem with that, as long as that every time EverSource wants to move some poles on a certain street.
No, no.
That we're not taking care of the trees.
Nope, this is all part of that Dow Road project.
Okay, then I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi. So do we have any other questions or concerns?
Yes, so what are we looking at here? Is he only want 12,600?
Nope, he did originally, he proposed the lower number. But by the time they were done doing the work, because they had two extra trees to take down, that's why the number's different.
So that's the total cost of what he had to do in the end?
Yes.
And so he, they just had to do it, and because of the agreement we entered before, that's why we do it?
Yep.
Like I said?
That's exactly, we're just doing a housekeeping.
Watch EverSource from now on, that's all I ask.
Can I have that final cost for the?
Sure. Kind of in front of you?
16,500. So do we, do we have a vote on this? For 12,600?
No.
Okay.
Again, they just proposed it, we get it afterwards, you see the date at the top, it was proposed, and they did the work, and now we're getting the bill, so to speak.
So to speak, we don't have to vote.
Don't have to, if you don't want to, but I think it's a good housekeeping practice.
And we did enter agreement with that?
Yes.
So I would, I would, I would make a motion that we accept the bid for 16,500, because we are people of our word, when we, we're in, we make an agreement, no matter how shady this looks, we, we hold up our end.
That's a long motion.
Sorry, I'm long-winded sometimes.
So your motioning is to?
Accept the 16,500.
Accept the 16,500 to pay for Rainville Tree Service?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, you have in your packet, should be the newest version, he just gave you tonight, of the, I have to wear in the book with the one, it is the line item transfers. Yep, I think I might have an extra.
It's here.
So you will see that there is a request for line item transfers. This happens occasionally, there are, we budget things, we forecast, and everything comes to fruition, sometimes it costs a little more. So you'll see there is a decrease and increase for two sections. One is for the town items, you have a, I'll read through them for you, the B&amp;G Electricity, they're going to decrease that from 15,000. It gives you a description of what it's for. Solar panels are there to help to save money, and so far, they have highway supplies expenses. Above for the, with the first one's 15,000, second one's 7,000. Highway can use town aid road to relocate and do different projects. Mapping for the planning and zoning, they have $160 left over, they received one invoice, so far, they have that much left over. Health insurance, she said she could get about $29,000, she's fine with allocating for health insurance from there for, because it's healthy. Tax collector salaries, about $1,500, they didn't use a seasonal employee, which is fantastic, but the reason why you have all those requests to decrease those lines is because of the following. The increase for B&amp;G overtime, it's not much, it's $1,000 because of the different events of causing overtime. Occasionally, you'll get some last-minute request to have something here at the town hall, you do need to have staffing onboard. I think we just did a, an event for the high school, fourth junior class, and that was last minute, so that's why there's adjustments here. Highway overtime, $4,000 due to storms and rain, so that's that one. I think, sir, you're looking for the meeting downstairs. Highway contracted service, do the uniform, they do cleaning of uniform all the time, so that's needed, at this point, $5,000. Building inspector, department head, we have three people in there working because of so many things that are happening, so we're requesting $2,000 to do the overtime work. We have general town telephones, they're finishing up the work for the, for the telephones to be ordered, and then come in and fix them all, but it's gotten a little over what we anticipated. So there are two fiber optic lines, we have to figure it out why we have two, and we have a contract that says we have to have two, so we only need one. So right now, that's over, we hope to resolve that issue by the end of the fiscal year. Town contributions for Memorial Day, that was because of the increased cost for the Memorial Day flags. Just recently, we went out to take a look at what the costs were again, and it is awful, it's skyrocketed, so that's why the increase there. Supplies for the fire marshal, $3,000 to purchase new computers and safety supplies for the emergency command center. We have supplies for planning and zoning, they are looking to purchase the safety gear for, based on the union contract, for the zoning officer. Pool operation, $4,000 salary for one month for pool lifecarts. Salaries for the building inspector, $3,000, again, there's an assistant building inspector that needs another computer. We also have salary for buildings and grounds. There is union contract, MOU, for them to get a little bit more money. Payroll services, $6,000, cost of new hires, resignations, additions of employee files. That's, just to be blunt about that one, we don't have a lot of resignations or, and/or additional employees. Most of them come from the police department, they've had a lot of turnover through the year, so that's why they have to have more money for the payroll services to keep up with that. Tax collector supplies, $1,500, they need to purchase binding rate books so they can have the tax collector, it's a state statute. So she just came to us the other day, so we had to add this one late. So the grand total there is $52,660, which matches the decrease from the top.
Didn't we just, the fire marshal up there?
From next year's budget?
Yeah, from next year.
Yep.
And he's over, over?
For different safety supplies?
Yeah.
Yep, replenish those on ring releases.
Just concerned about that, the new.
Yep. And I'll make a comment on that later on, to finish up on the police. We separated it up for the police, because the chief was able to help us out with the list of the items. Did you get in your packet, the police had several documentation? You should have it in there.
No. That was the permit ask. Oh, it's right behind me, sorry, my bad.
Okay, it gives a better description, but while you're reading through that, I'll just go through. Decrease for the police salaries of 106,100. Decrease for utilities, what they saved so far, so 3,500 there. A decrease for heart and hypertension, 3,500. Holiday pay, $5,000, and custodian, $2,000. What he's looking to put the money towards, for the increases for dispatcher salaries, 26,000, police overtime, 30,500, vehicle expense, 25,000, police uniforms, 3,600, computer line, 28,000, supplies and expenses, 7,000. Now, your descriptions are a little more descriptive than what I just read. If you want me to go through each item I would, there was one thing I would point out that under the computer lines, it says, you know, a combination of things to make that number. The most recent thing that had actually gone down was his department's ID machine, the door entry fob has to be replaced because it's no longer working, they say approximately the cost was about $7,000 at that time, so they're unable to issue police IDs and their town ID cards. Police officers required by state law and department policies to have law enforcement IDs, which must be worn when they're out in those carments. So there's, I think four officers who just come on, they don't have that as a be-able to plan on trying to, and then sent over to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance meeting is on the 18th, as we just mentioned earlier, so they would have to do the approval of these items.
Any questions?
I'll try my very best to answer.
Register.
You mean line item transfers?
No.
Okay.
No.
There's money left overs, what you're getting?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, there is. Especially if it's registered, or almost open registers, again, 8.33, second day.
Yep.
And then general town postage. I think that one's over. It's almost, this is not 4.42.
Should be enough, check the tally on each of these items.
Okay, and then the only other question I have is on the police one. Was, vehicle expense, he's looking for 25,000 extra, he's where, I don't know, on vehicle expense. He's 5,500 over right now.
And I think that's one of the reasons why.
He's saying he needs 20,000 for the next month.
Mm-hmm.
Computers, same thing, 28, he's looking for, he's like 1300 over. So he's going to need 25,000 for the computers in the next month. Okay?
Okay.
And supplies and expenses, same thing, he's looking for 7.
Yep.
Is that, where is it? He's on 400 over. Just checking.
So, back to the fire marshal. His budget was quite tight that we just approved, but he's going to be 3,000.
He's taking 3,000 out of the computers slash supplies?
Yep.
Yep, so we can help him to save money for next year. Yeah, I can tell, my generic statement I would say about what we pass as a budget, it was super tight.
Yes.
No matter what happens, we're going to keep an eye on it, so if we have to come back to the Board of Finance to ask for monies, we'll do that, because I don't know how we're going to continue doing that route of continuing to knock down what we're asking, requesting monies for, and it gets to be the point where it's so tight, that one thing happens, and you have to come back to the Board of Finance to ask, but I will.
And are you talking to the, whoever we contract for the phone services?
Yes, I've talked to them today.
Good.
Yeah, it just takes too long, it's been over a year.
Sometimes you don't know what you got until you're, look it over. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? If not, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the proposed line item transfers in the amount of 172,760.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number nine and item number 10, I am going to ask table to the next meeting. We have tentative agreements, but we have to wait for the ratification, so both unions have to ratify, and they have not done that yet.
Question, when we vote on something like that, do we, when we're executive, okay, that's what I'm.
Yeah, yep.
Make a motion, table item nine and item 10, to the next meeting.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number nine and item number 10, I am going to ask table to the next meeting. We have tentative agreements, but we have to wait for the ratification, so both unions have to ratify, and they have not done that yet.
Question, when we vote on something like that, do we, when we're executive, okay, that's what I'm.
Yeah, yep.
Make a motion, table item nine and item 10, to the next meeting.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number nine and item number 10, I am going to ask table to the next meeting. We have tentative agreements, but we have to wait for the ratification, so both unions have to ratify, and they have not done that yet.
Question, when we vote on something like that, do we, when we're executive, okay, that's what I'm.
Yeah, yep.
Make a motion, table item nine and item 10, to the next meeting.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Alright, the only thing we have on the agenda is United Services' request for opioid funding. You see the letter that you have in front of you from United Services, I'll tell you the, the good news, is that we've already, we continue to get more money coming in from the settlement, so we earmark monies for the Board of Education, and we've, we're earmarking some monies for the Family Resource Center, for smoking cessation, for vaping, and also, I would like to be able to in the future, come back to you with a, you know, proposal to earmark some of the monies for United Services, because they do excellent services as well.
Or.
Yep, and for other groups that want to come forward as well, but for right of I think, United Services would do the job for us.
We were asleep on the phone, maybe.
I agree 100%.
Yeah.
See that every year.
I see the bonuses being coming in, depending on what it is.
Yep. Alright, at that, we would say entertain motion to adjourn.
No, I have one.
Are we?
I have something else. Alright, so I just want to put it on the record.
Okay.
So I want to make, put this on the record, that from now on, when you think I should So I want to make, put this on the record that from now on, when you think I should do something, rather be, recuse myself or leave the room on something.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? I'm going to need that in writing from now on, because the last time we met for the WPCA, you gave me some errant information, and.
You gave me what?
You gave me some erroneous information.
Erroneous.
Erroneous, I can't say that.
It's okay.
You know what I mean? And I, I will need some written proof of what it is you think I should do, or I won't be doing it. Just making it clear right now, because I was property owner at one of the last meeting, one of our other meetings, and have you haven't been here as long as you have, I, I kind of took your experience, and when you said I should leave the room, I did, I was a property owner at that point. And from now on, if you could just show me where that's written, when something needs to be done, I would appreciate it.
Peg, when you say erroneous, can you explain to me what, why it was erroneous?
Because I was a property owner, I still could be in the room, okay? If you have, if you have.
Actually, Peg, I can't.
Okay.
You have gotten a copy of the town of Plainfield Code of Ethics?
Yes, I have.
And you signed up on it?
Mm-hmm, is it in there?
There you go.
I'll reread it, please.
And there's your, there's your signature.
I will reread it then, because that is, as a property owner, you should not, you should still be.
Well, before you say another word.
Yep.
The public official or public employee shall recuse, says himself, but should be themselves, from such participation and vacate the room where the business is being conducted during the time of the discussion voting on action.
I just don't think that's right, you're, if you, with property, being a property owner, I still should not have to give up my rights.
Actually, Peg, you do, and I'll tell you why, I'll tell you the reasons why. If you ever listened to planning and zoning, there's been a couple of instances where Carla is the chair, said it is something that's in conflict, and she has gotten up, and she's walked out of the room, so it's.
It did not have to do with her property.
She has recused herself in doing so.
Yes, she has, it did not have anything to do with her property, her property rights.
All right. Let's go back to then the, the first one. A, persons governed by this code shall not engage or participate in discussion, voting, or action on any matter brought before him or her, or the board that he or she is a member of, that would result in a financial gain or loss to the public official or public employee, or his or her immediate family member or business which he or she is associated. That is your property.
Mm-hmm.
In a vote by you during that meeting.
No, I'm not having.
Or even conversation, or even a conversation as part of this, here or out there in the audience, could influence other people. That's exactly why it's written like that.